Good morning.
Good morning.
And welcome to the new budget, Mauald Town Hall. My name is Laura Lee Keachley and I'm with the College of Fine Performing and Communication Arts, and I will be the moderator for this session. This town hall is the second town hall that the RCM Planning Group has had. The first one was in October. How many of you were there in October? Okay, so you're on top of stuff and you want to see how we've gotten from there and where is here and what does that look like? And so that's what today's presentation sharing is going to be about. Let me overview how we're going to proceed. We'll talk about a project overview. And then I'm also a big fan about talking about rumors and word on the street. So we'll tap onto that, about some of the things that people are putting out in the ether, about what their concerns are. And then we'll move into our task forces presenting their specific recommendations having to do with their specific charge, which is tied into the model. Then we'll have opportunities for question and answers. So we're doing that in a few ways. We have at least three sources of questions that are coming in. Some of you may have already posted them to our website at rcm.wayne.edu. Let me just see if it's gonna... Nope, okay. Some is going to come in live stream. Jessica's handling that. We have... So people may be doing this from their office, they may be doing it from the Italian room, they may be doing it from home with their fluffy slippers on and really relaxing about this whole thing. And then also you. So whatever kinds of questions you have in this group, and we also have members of our steering committee here, and some of the other rest of the task force members, we're gonna... They're gonna try to address your questions as best as possible, recognizing that this is a model in process and it's being developed. So sometimes the answer will be, "Good question. This is how we're thinking about it," or "That's something we're moving to next." And in other cases, we can give you more specific information. Part of what's hopeful is that as you hear from the task force members, some of the questions you're already starting to formulate, you're gonna go, "Oh, okay. I can see where this... What this looks like now." Okay? So is everybody ready?
Yes.
Okay. So we said... It's not gonna... I was gonna say, maybe I should do the metaphor of the airline airplane, but no, it's not gonna be a bumpy ride. But do stay in your seats and pay attention to the display. All right. So the project of interview overview, just to remind you of what this whole effort has been about. It's been focused on supporting the long-term financial success, sustainability, and promise of Wayne State. So to look at it in a number of different ways, or elements of that. We want to create structures. The university, we as community members, want to create structures that are supportive of generating new ideas, innovation, and collaboration. We want to be able to link authority and financial responsibility. Fancy way of saying, the people who are making decisions, like in the colleges, the schools, the divisions, the leaders of those units. A model like this is about putting more of that authority for them to manage the finances and the revenues and the costs within their own unit. So moving it down to the people who know best what's happening in their units, what their folks need, and how best to handle that. As always, as a university, as Wayne State's commitment, we want to have a financial model that continues to sustain and support the student experience and how we go about doing that. Of course, we want to make sure that we continue to attract and retain the talented faculty and staff that we currently have, and we want to add more people to it. So having a process that's more transparent, that's more clearly linked to the strategic goals and initiatives of the university and the colleges, schools, and divisions will facilitate that. And we want to continue, as we always have at Wayne State, to promote our mission of service. So we're really focused on our three key activities, which are instruction, research and creative activity, and public service. And so any kind of model we develop has to be supportive of that, incentivizes it... Oh, oh, I used a corporate word. To support it and move it forward. So we want that to happen. Here's, give you a sense of the timeline. This group, the entire set of task forces and the steering committee, that was all set up in February of 2017 to start working on various elements of it. Throughout this time, we've been working on the committee research and model development. We're gonna talk all specifics about what that looks like in our task force. Co-leaders are gonna talk about that work. In 2019, 2020, we will test out the model that's been developed. So we'll have a period of time, we'll have a year, where we're gonna run our current model, the incremental budgeting model, which we have alongside this model, to... So we can actually see in real time what the implications are, what the impact is, and is it starting, is it moving us and supporting all of the activities that we want to be able to do. And then we'll ultimately go live in fiscal year 2021. So that's the overall plan. So again, visit the website. How many of you have visited the website? Okay. Good information there, right? For those of you who haven't, I encourage you to do that. One of the things that we do there is we post all the information we have. We also have a frequently asked questions section. So questions that people raise, either by sending it directly through the website or things here, we will continually be updating that. So you'll have the best information that's available in real time. And it's also a really wonderful portal for you to be sharing your ongoing questions and feedback about what you think about the process and how the model is developing. Okay, so rumors. There's no... There's never any rumors on Wayne State's campus, so this is just gonna be a hypothetical, right? If there were rumors on Wayne State campus, this is from other universities, this is not from us, okay? If there are rumors on the campus campuses, what might they look like? Now, the really big one that other campuses hear is that this has already been predetermined. The provost, the president, the CFO have all decided how this is supposed to work out, right Keith? Yep. Same. No, it's not. And I think one of the things you're gonna discover is hearing these co-leads of the task forces talk about how they did their work and what the recommendations they, as a task force, are making to move it forward. So they're not being told how to do this, they're not being told what they should recommend. They're developing based on their work, their research, together. Okay? So hold on that rumor... Well, but it's not here. I said it wasn't here. Okay. But it's... That RCM and Janet Reform are connected. We can explore that. They did not co-occur together. They're addressing different aspects of it, but as with any community, anything that happens one place has an impact on other places. So ultimately, it's all connected. But this was not a conspiracy that was cooked up on other campuses about tying finances to general education, although there are questions about that, and we'll certainly pursue some of those. It's a way to get rid of small programs and departments. That, I think you're gonna hear from the task force co-leads, that that was never an assumption, and in fact, that's something to be actively worked against. We're about providing the best educational student experience. We're about providing the best environment to facilitate the creation and distribution of knowledge in terms of research and creative activity, and that's not always associated with size, right? It's about impact. So we'll talk about the different ways we think about impact. Every college for itself, right? That's a rumor that shows up on other campuses, that any model we're creating may actually create a situation where our colleges, our schools, our divisions go in competition with each other. And we know that if we go into competition, we will not do well. None of us will do well. The students won't do well, the faculty and staff won't do well. So you'll hear that again reflected in some of the comments that you'll hear from the task force. And finally, you know about Amazon? You know about Facebook? You know about RCM? A coincidence? Maybe, yes, maybe no. But I want you to be curious about that and suspend the conclusion until you have a chance to hear, we're gonna hear from some of the folks here today. So you ready? You game? All right. So, oops, gotta see this crew. It's one thing for us to say, "There's lots of people involved." It's another thing for you to see just how many people are directly involved, but that there's a whole lot of people who are connected through that. In looking at that list, and somebody swore to me when we practiced this on Monday, that people at the back could see this. Is that true? Thank goodness. How many of us have done a presentation and somebody starts off by saying, "You probably can't see this." And then the rest of us wanna go, "Then why have you have it up there?" So looking at that, but... Do you know... By show of hands, is there anybody on that list that you know? Cool. And for those of you who didn't put up your hand, we're available afterwards. We're friendly. You can come talk to us. But the important part about this too, not only is to show you the range of folks who are involved throughout different parts of the organization, but also, if there are people that you know, go talk to them. If something concerns you, raise it with them, because they will be able to help connect you, or perhaps even provide you with some information, right? So that's what we want. All right. So the task forces, these are the task forces we're gonna hear from. And so without further ado, we'll hear from revenue allocation.
Can you all hear me? The light's on. And she's home. They're making me talk into this thing. I'm Laura Trokia, I'm the Business Affairs Officer with the College of Engineering, and I'm the co-lead of the Revenue Allocation Task Force.
And I'm Jeff Kenter. I'm Chair of the Sociology Department in CLAS.
Okay. Thank you. We had the pleasure of working with a nine-person team, with representatives from across the university, primarily schools and colleges, but we did have some representation from central office as well. We met bi-weekly over a period of about nine months, and we were dictated as to what we were supposed to do, and you can see right there what that was. We were supposed to attribute income to the Responsibility Centers and identify rules for assigning those revenues. So it was very clear from the beginning exactly how this was gonna fall out. We... You keep skipping ahead.
They're coordinating.
We reviewed, our team reviewed several other universities' models. I'm sorry?
Just keep focusing on that. Okay, cool.
Several other universities' models, six of them very in-depth. There were another 30 or so that we looked through, just in looking to find outliers, things that we may not have thought of. We identified a philosophy that was gonna provide the framework for our recommendations. And that philosophy includes revenues flowing to the units generating the revenue. And very secretly, we coded these things as RGUs, Revenue-Generating Units. And primarily, those were schools and colleges. That included all of the schools and colleges, with the exception of the graduate school and the honors college. The graduate school and honors college and what we grouped together as central units formed the NGU group, the Non-Revenue-Generating Units. So revenues would flow to the revenue-generating units, and for transparency purposes, this occurred even though other units might incur those expenses. There are other processes embedded in the model that we were recommended that would move those, that funding to the units that incur the expenses. But at the beginning point, all revenues would flow to the units generating the activity. And we gave consideration to the influence that the leaders of the RGUs had on increasing or decreasing the activity. The simplicity of the model, we didn't want the model itself to take over, the math taking over the purpose of the model, and consistency with other institutions. Within this framework, we developed a set of recommendations, and I want to be clear that these are recommendations. We do not have the authority to implement these, nor I think do we want to take over the role of the steering committee. So these are recommendations that our team made to the steering committee. The first recommendation has to do with tuition revenues, and we recommended that tuition revenues be allocated to the units generating that revenue. Would be allocated as net revenue, and what we mean by net is that it would be the tuition revenue that are, that's paid for the, for instruction minus the cost of financial aid, and I'll get to that in a minute. We recommended that the allocations be made 75% based on the unit doing the teaching and 25% based on the unit where the student is majoring. So getting back to the financial aid piece, that really falls into our second recommendation. And for undergraduate financial aid, this would be the central financial aid pot that the Financial Aid Office manages. That would be funded by netting the cost of financial aid against the revenue from tuition. And the mechanism to do that would be taking the total cost of, the total pool of undergraduate financial aid, dividing it by the number of undergraduate credit hours, using that per credit hour financial aid cost, and netting it against the RGU's tuition revenue. In this way, it... There's no incentive for units to enroll students that don't need financial aid, and allows all students equal access to financial aid regardless of where they're enrolled. Graduate financial aid would be funded and allocated by the, by their actual unit, so by the RGUs, was our second component of that recommendation. Finally, indirect cost recovery. For those of you that don't know, that's the money that is associated with grant funding, where we have identified a certain percentage of costs that it, that the university pays in support of conducting research. So indirect cost recovery, we recommended go 100% to the unit where the PI, the Principal Investigator, is conducting the research. There could be multiple principal investigators, primary investigators, and it would then be distributed. As it is now, PIs identify when they receive an award, how much of the ICR goes to them or their co-PIs. So the ICR would then flow to those individuals' units. State appropriation and miscellaneous income would go to fund the non-revenue generating units and cover the subsidy that may be required for revenue generating units that, where their cost of instruction exceeds the revenue that they may get. There's one additional component that I wanted to mention. Our recommendation is that all of the revenue be allocated to the major units, meaning that it goes to the deans or the schools and colleges. And then it is up to each individual dean or director to determine whether those funds flow further within their own unit, whether it be distributed down to departments and what that mechanism would be. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Okay, the next team was the cost allocation team, of which Rachel and I were the leaders. I'm Peter Hoffman, from the Department of Physics in CLAS.
And I'm Rachel Beatty. I'm the Business Affairs Officer for the Library System.
Our process was very similar. We have 11 members on our team. We met bi-weekly from March to November last year. We have had some extra additional meetings this year just to finalize things. We also benchmarked various universities. We looked at all the cost centers, basically the areas in the university that don't generate the NGUs as they are defined, what kind of cost they are, what would be possible cost drivers. There are many ways of allocating the cost. One way would be to basically identify various cost drivers, and cost drivers meaning things like credit hours, space, people employed, those kind of things. It can get very, very complicated very quickly to do that, and it doesn't really make the final numbers that different. So we decided to recommend that we make it much more simple. But our goal's in charge, first of all. Rachel's gonna...
Our goal was to attribute the cost to the Responsibility Centers in a way that incentivizes change, also to identify rules for assigning costs. And another one of our goals, as our committee met, was to keep everything simple and try to use the data that is currently available as much as possible, because the RCM is not going to generate a new pool of money. We're still working with the same pool of money that we have. So we try to keep the costs of this new model down as much as possible.
So just to reiterate, our philosophy was to keep the record-keeping simple, so we don't have to keep track of all kinds of data. We're not capturing very well at the moment anyways. We want to use data that's already available to assign cost, and if we found a simpler allocation mechanism that basically yielded a very similar result, we went with a simpler allocation mechanism.
The first recommendation we had, you can either tax the revenue, or you can tax the expense. We decided to recommend that you would tax the expense. And the reason being, it rewards cost containment, for number one. It does not de-incentivize generating new revenue. And in this new model, that will be a goal, to try to bring in new revenue streams. It is also consistent with the mythology for FNA, which is Finance, Facilities and Administrative Recovery from Federal Grants. And it's also more reliable when you're looking at your transactions.
And just to make a bit more clear, when we talk about tax, we talk about the differential money that's needed to fund central units that may not be covered by, you know, the money of the state appropriations and other miscellaneous, miscellaneous income. So there may be some gap that needs to be filled by basically paying a small, hopefully a small tax, and this is how we would allocate it. Now, we also decided to have one cost driver besides just the general, you know, to have a general tax on expenses, and that would be to have a tax on space. And the reason for this is that it's, it's very helpful to have an incentive of using spare space efficiently. This would basically be allocated by assigned square footage, and we already measured a space, so it's not, couldn't add a whole lot of additional measurement. And in addition, it would fit with the development of a university master plan that's underway. That's pretty much the summary of our cost allocation recommendations, and I'm now turning over to the Strategic Funding Group.
All right. Thank you. I'm Ben Pokajinski, Associate Professor in Educational Leadership and Policy.
And I'm Joan Ferguson. I'm the Assistant Dean of the College of Fine Performing and Communication Arts.
All right. Our task force was, goal was to determine a methodology to ensure that resources are available to fund strategic initiatives. So it's a multi-step process, as others indicated, and the first step was to familiarize, familiarize ourselves with the strategic plan here at the university, to develop a set of benchmarks that we'd explore at other universities who are implementing an RCM model. So we came up with a broad set of benchmarks, which Joan's gonna speak to in a minute, and then the task force members did some research across six different universities to see what they were doing, so reviewing their websites, collecting information. And from there, we started to develop a deeper set of sub-questions and had the opportunity to meet with the steering committee as well to provide a general overview of where we were heading to get some feedback. And from there, we did some more in-depth research at three universities, Iowa State, Temple, and University of Arizona, which including us, speaking with individuals there to gather more information to inform our benchmarks. So we created spreadsheets to look across these universities to see what they were doing, thought about how this might fit in with our own strategic plan and current funding model for strategic initiatives here, to build our plan for the methodology and recommendations. So that's the general overview of process. I'll turn it over to Joan.
Okay. Our next step, and what we really... Can you switch? All right. Our strategic funding recommendations are actually what I would call our benchmarks. We found that we were, we were scrambling and trying to figure out in which direction to proceed, and as a group, we set these four benchmarks. We felt these were the four important processes and areas that we needed to focus on in our review to come up with recommendations for our charge. So the first area that we thought was important is, where are we going to get resources and revenues to fund the strategic initiatives? In our review of the three, the three universities that we looked at, we made sure that there was a model that showed that there was funding available for the strategic, and how much money was available in these three universities. What our recommendation is at this point is that we would, we have, and we have looked at what the university has funded for basic strategic initiatives in the past. We would recommend that we use that as a starting point and work with other models and their recommendations. As far as determining revenue sources, because of course, we need revenue if we're going to have the strategic initiatives funded and completed, we would work with our cost and our revenue task force to determine how that funding would be determined and how much, because we have not finalized a number yet, but we would move in that direction. Our second benchmark, of course, would be how we distribute the resources that were set aside for strategic funding. What we found from the work as our committee, our task force, was that we really need to focus on a standardized process for how this is carried out. The schools, colleges, and divisions would follow this process and submit a funding request. We, as part of our research, found that Temple University has a very, I'd like to say it's a very well-organized, formalized process that they use for this purpose, and that we would probably work from that and move forward and make changes as we felt were appropriate for strategic funding. This would be part of our annual budget hearings that currently exist. At the university, we are recommending that model not change, but that be used as the annual submission of requests, determining the distribution of the funding for strategic initiatives, and then also to follow up on that. We currently, in our budget planning hearing process, we have a budget planning council that review, that we would consider as, and recommend as, the group to make some recommendations to the president and provost as to how some of these strategic initiatives might be considered for funding. Final decisions, we would, of course, would be the president and provost. One of the other areas as far as distribution of resources that we felt was very important is that we provide transparency, that there is an annual reporting process that would show to the university community. We would report this to the university as to what areas received funding for a strategic initiative, and so our recommendation is for transparency. Of course, our third benchmark was to make sure we align with the strategic plan. You know, this is, this is a university document that we need to make sure that we are following our plan and that we are providing the funding to meet those goals that are set forth. An example of this might be where we have a goal to have student success, and we have, we want to improve on graduate student education. This might then become one of the proposals for an initiative that would be put forth by a school or college. The, the application that we are proposing or recommending for the requests would be formalized, and it would also, it might possibly align with other areas of the university. So this might be an interdisciplinary proposal that would be put forth. I also, I mentioned about documenting this information and monitoring it through the year. We, and this might be a little bit too hopeful, but we would like to see some sort of financial reporting process where we could code and have separate indexes for strategic initiatives so that we could make sure that that was a standalone and that funding was be, was clearly able to be tracked, so that it would not go into like a central pot where it would be lost, but we would like to have some way to code that. The fourth benchmark, and we all, as a task force, felt very strongly about this, was that there is accountability to this process and evaluation. So we are recommending that metrics would be established to measure whether or not the goal was attained and what progress was made. We felt that the metrics would be established by the school, college, or division as part of their funding request. So that school, college, or division would create their own metrics that they would be measured by. We would make sure that there would be accountability for meeting those stated goals that were put forth in the proposal. And the measure of accountability would be based on whether or not the goal was attained And the measure of accountability would be based on whether or not the metrics are met. This would, as far as monitoring this process, we see this as part of the annual budget hearing. So essentially, there is a circular process where the school, college, division submits the request for funding. And then the following year, if they did receive funding, they would have to report back as to what the progress was on that. Records would be kept on this, and outcomes and assessment would be shared with the university community. So that, that was basically our proposal, our recommendation for strategic funding with the RCM model. Thank you.
My name is Celeste Leju. I'm Assistant Vice President for Academic Affairs. What I'm talking about today is the goals and charge of the Incentive and Performance Task Force and how they have to design the incentives. One of the things is to encourage ownership at the unit level. And by doing this, we need to connect the authority and responsibility, responsibility further down the organization chart. The other design we're looking at is to enable revenue growth. This revenue growth, I mean, everybody knows if you have retained revenues, it's a great incentive for growth and enforces the spirit of entrepreneurship. The other item is a possibly positively impact faculty through great flexibility to increase resources. What I see from this is that academic considerations will be given a higher priority since decisions are made by those closest to the impact of these decisions. The other one was enhance the student experience by helping expedite their progress to degree. I can't go any further than our strategic plan that states our students are a top priority, and we provide them with the tools and experience that they need to learn and to succeed. I'm going to introduce the new task force co-leads for the incentive and perform, performance. They're fairly new. I think they just got the positions. One is Ramona Bankard, Associate Dean in the College of Nursing over there. And Cheryl Collin, the Senior Director for University Advising. So I'm just filling in for them at this point. So, the next, the scope of focus that they're looking at is interdisciplinary activities. And just being involved with this recently with the provost, this can promote collaborations of faculty members around a thematic area such as health disparities, social justice, social inequities. And what they can do as a group is work together to identify possible research, research funding, and develop courses or other instructional activities that would support the academic subject of their thematic area. So, it's really important that we move into this direction. The other piece is student success. And that's actually to increase retention, give clear pathways for people to, for the students to succeed here. I think this incentive and performance follows everything on the overview that was on Slide Three and talks about the very aspect of the project.
My name is Lisa Schrader. I'm the Business Affairs Officer for the Finance and Business Operations Division, and I'm joined by...
I'm Dawn Aziz. I'm part of Organizational Effectiveness and Continuous Improvement.
Thank you. Together, we're the co-leads for the Training Task Force. And the Training Task Force was charged with developing a framework through which we could deliver training, information, and materials for this project. And I would say that we were challenged at first. And back in 2017, the project launched. And each of these task forces that you heard from today set off to look at information and benchmark and develop their initial recommendations that you heard. And unfortunately, we didn't have any data or information or a model to base any training on yet. So, we saw this as an opportunity to craft a series of offerings that would provide financial and budgetary, first of all, awareness, understanding, and then skill. Our initial offering, which is to, aimed at building awareness, is now available on our, the RCM website. So it's available for everyone here to go back and, and take a look at. It provides a basic introductory, introduction, introductory information for those who may not know much or anything about Wayne State University's financial accounting or budgeting. Dawn's going to give us a brief sneak peek in just a few moments, so I won't say too much more about that. Our second offering is aimed at giving people better understanding, kind of that next level in. And will be, it'll be based on our offering, common concepts and terminology for a generic RCM model first, just to get people more information about things they're probably, they're hearing here today and may have questions on. And then more specifically, we'll have an offering that will concentrate on then the WSU model, once it's been finalized later in the calendar year. And finally, our third offering will dig deeper into the WSU model. And it'll be aimed at those who are going to be working directly with the model. And will need to know the ins and outs and how to manage and look at the finances and budgeting for their role. Could be, it's going to be deans, chairs, business affairs officers across campus. I'm going to turn this over now to Dawn, and she'll give us a sneak peek at the next, at our first offering.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So how many of us know how Wayne State finances work today? Some, right? What a great opportunity to begin by thinking about laying context. Before we learn about a new model, it's a great opportunity to think about what's being done today. And I'm really pleased to introduce our introductory e-learning that's available on the RCM website. I'm going to share with you a glimpse into the introduction from President Wilson, and then just really a table of content, so that you'll know what to expect when time allows for you to dig into it a little bit deeper.
Welcome to this interactive presentation, building financial and budgetary awareness. The basic...
Welcome to this interactive presentation of Wayne State University's budget transition. The presentation will provide you both an overview of how budgeting currently works at our university, and a point of reference as we work to adopt the new budget model over the next few years. The more you understand about Wayne State's budgeting transition, the easier the transition will be for everyone. This is an important step for Wayne State, so I appreciate your participation.
We anticipate this self...
Wayne State University...
Oh, I'm so sorry. We anticipate this self-paced e-learning will make, take you about 20 minutes if you were to watch it end to end. But because you're busy people, you might just go in and go out as you need to. And as you go in and out, you'll find that there's five funds that you can dig deeper into and learn a bit about where the source of funding comes from and how that money's being used today. So I'll give you just a real brief glimpse into what you would see when you jot into the general fund wallet.
The General Fund accounts for the resources that sustain our core instruction, departmental research, and instructional support, as well as related general administrative costs and facilities expenditures. The General Fund is the current unrestricted fund used to account for our general operating revenue and expenditures.
Riveting, right? Nonetheless, I wanted to be sure that you know that it's there as you begin hearing about the new model and learning more, that this is always going to give you a glossary of key terms if you're not that familiar with finance concepts, as well as that basis of what's being done today. We owe a special thank you to so many people who made this e-learning possible. You might have recognized the voice of our narrator, Michael Barnes, from College of Fine Performing and Communication Arts. You'll see the polish came from Art Leonis in our marketing group in terms of visuals and music. You'll see that there's input that came from institutional research with Mark Byrd and Greg Byrd, who helped us get a little bit deeper insight into the state appropriations process in East Lansing. And just so many people as part of our training team, our BAOs, our Office of Budget weighed in on the content that you'll see there as well. And it was produced by one of our very own organizational effectiveness and continuous improvement team members, Tanya Thomas. So I hope you dig into it, you let us know your thoughts about how it helped you.
So, let me give you a sense about, first of all, that's lots of information, right? And you've all handled it, you've all got it categorized, you know exactly what's going to happen, right? All right. But we're going to get a chance for you to dig into that a little bit more with some of your questions. But first of all, let's overview the rest of the timeframe that's going to happen. So, the recommendations from the various task forces were due towards the end of February, early March. And then we started the process April 4th, beginning April 4th, of gathering campus feedback, which is going to be a several months-long process. And the very first group that we went to was the Academic Senate. And there was a presentation and a discussion, a lively discussion at the Academic Senate. Then we have this Town Hall. During the summer, the dean's council will be working with some of this information as well, challenging and raising issues with it. And of course, ongoing, we're going to have the website. The website is constantly going to be updated. So your questions, your feedback become really critical in making sure that we keep on top of that and we get that information to you in as timely manner as possible and in a form that makes sense, so you can understand them. By the end of July, we, they will be working with the model as is, based on some of the recommendations and what the committee is choosing, and start running that with the 2017 data. So 2017 is already gone. We already know what happened there, or maybe we don't, but we have some ideas about what happened. And now we're going to look at what would that have been like with that kind of, with that information for 2017, using the current, the newly developed model as it currently stands. So running that, so we actually have some numbers. Initially, there was work done with the 2016 data, which helped surface certain things that had to be considered, and a lot of the task forces were involved in considering that. From September to October, will be individual school and college meetings. So the groups will be going to the specific college, school and college to meet with everybody there, the deans, chairs, faculty, staff, talking about the model and what it means at this point in time for the monies and the finances and the support of the college and school and the division. So that will continue on for a couple of months. And then by the end of October, we're anticipating that very active, us going out, being proactive, pulling information in, that that will be a place at which we'll, we'll stop for that moment. And then all of that information will continue to be filtered through to hopefully the design of a working, working model at the end of this year. So that's the timeline at this point, and how we're moving to go about doing that. All right. So, I'm going to flip it there. And now is, so just want to remind you about the website, but now is the time. Let's have some questions, your thoughts, your comments, based on that. And I want to reiterate, we're getting them from three sources, from you here. Any questions, comments you have. We're also getting it live streamed through Jessica. And we've also had questions brought in through the website over the last several weeks that we can also bring up to, to raise some issues that maybe you haven't thought about or we haven't thought about. Okay? So does anybody have something really burning right now that you would like? Oh, we got two back there. We got, all the way in the back, actually. I was going to the back first, Linda, and then to you, because I saw his hand first.
He was pointing to me.
Okay.
Since I had my head on for quite a while. Lauralee, this process specifically excluded the Academic Senate President and the Chair of the Academic Senate Budget Committee, the two people who probably, among the faculty, were the most knowledgeable about the budget process from the development of these recommendations. And the presentation at the Academic Senate's meeting on April 4th was very superficial. We got no information about the specific recommendations. And a meeting that I held of the Budget Committee just a week or so before that, with all of the faculty members of the Budget Advisory Committees of the school and colleges, which was to give them some foretaste of the issues and a chance to think about it, also included no real information about the recommendations. So my question is, how are you really going to ensure that there's adequate information to the people who are most likely to be able to give good feedback in terms of what the recommendations are? When you're holding this one town meeting, you're holding meetings with schools and colleges. But the groups you need to actually have a good bit of discussion with are the Academic Senate groups, the Budget Committee, the full Academic Senate, and the Budget Advisory Committees, which are the union-established, faculty-elected or academic staff-elected members of the Budget Advisory Committees that are supposed to be receiving reports, financial reports, from their departments, from their schools and colleges at the different levels, that enable them to understand and think about the consequences of RCM in the future for the university, for the schools and colleges. Much of what we see here is more specific than anything we've seen before, but there are still numerous issues and numerous concerns about how it works. And I think the, sort of the Town Hall here, what people with not having this in writing beforehand, not having a chance to think about it beforehand, what they happen to say here is not an adequate means of getting consultation.
So your concern is, Linda, to make sure that all those voices that have the knowledge and experience and the perspectives that are critical for the manifestation of the university be included?
Well, they haven't been included. And even when they've been purported to be included, the 404 introduction to the Academic Senate was not any of the specifics. And so I understand there are written reports from each task force. Are they being distributed?
I'm looking at the steering committee.
I think the Academic Senate, the Academic Senate Budget Committee, and the Budget Advisory Committees in all of the school and college units should get copies of those reports before you go to the schools and colleges in September and October with a almost complete or probably complete model.
Okay. So you want more broad information sharing with very specific groups that have a lot to say about what should happen. Okay? Any other, any comments from the folks here? Oh, wait a minute. Are you responding to that, Dawn? Or, okay, hold on. Then hang on, because we had somebody back here. The other thing is, every question that you're giving us is being recorded so that we can follow up. No, not so that we can track you down and figure out where you live. But, so we can gather the information together to get that. So we're going to pursue that question that you have raised, Linda. Okay? And there was a fellow behind who had his hand up.
No.
Oh, he was just pointing. Thanks for pointing. That's helpful. Okay. Over here.
I believe that we should have started the questions by saying thank you for all of the work, for all of the effort. I, I believe this has been an amazing undertaking and that it's probably quite thankless and it has a whole bunch of math, so it's not really my thing. I did want to ask quickly, though, as, as working in one of those divisions that is, we are a revenue generating unit when we bring in recruiting students and things like in undergraduate admissions, graduate admissions, those types of things. How we will be seeing this process kind of flow out? I know that we're not going to lose funding because recruiting students is very important, but I just wasn't sure where the meetings were happening with the non-revenue generating units and how that was going to move forward.
Hang on. Can you, you guys address that? About, yep, go for it.
We'll try it.
Is it on? Press it from the bottom.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay. So, so we haven't determined that exact information yet about how we're going to distribute it there, that, that the RGUs will, will get the tuition funding and the NGUs will, will get the state appropriations.
These are the recommendations, right?
These are, these are our recommendations, yeah, to be real, real clear about that. And so how that's broken down within those units is determined by, by those units, not by us. That's our recommendation.
Okay. Lou?
Well, I'd, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work. I know this has been a big undertaking. It seems to me that the key to this, and the thing that we're all concerned about is, how is the tuition money really going to be redistributed? Because I think it's unlikely, based on what I know, that the state appropriations is enough to fund the administration, administrative portion of this university. It's very doubtful. It's probably closer to 50% of our cost, and the state appropriations is about a third of our cost. So obviously, tuition money is going to go to fund the administration. But more importantly, there are some colleges, now I've served on the president's panel... that, it was part of the budget planning process where we did the budget hearings for, for four years before, we had a budget planning council. And part of that was information given to us by Rob Corman that showed the profitability of each of the colleges. Now, profitability is probably different than the calculations you'll do for RCM, but I think it meant something. And what it showed was that the colleges that generate a lot of tuition, specifically liberal arts was the most profitable, generated 20 to 30 million, depending on the year, but probably closer to 20 million a year, more than it costs to run the college. So maybe the RCM will show similar excesses. Some colleges were in deficit, big deficits. So the College of Medicine spent 15, 20 million dollars more than it brought in in revenue. So the question is, how is this excess tuition that one college makes, how is that going to be redistributed to other colleges that make less or make none? Lose money. And, and how will the state and the Board of Governors feel about undergraduate tuition money going to support the School of Medicine? Because I think, you know, maybe we're in a unique position. Most school of medicines don't lose money. But we don't own the hospitals, and we seem to not make as much as others.
Okay.
So that's really a fundamental question that I, not sure that these people up here can answer, but maybe some on the executive committee or might be able to address.
Well, let's let our colleagues here talk about what some of their deliberations were on that. You guys?
Is that working? Okay, good. So there's two pieces. So one is, you know, how do we cover the difference between the state appropriation covering central accounts and, you know, that they may not cover all of it, as you mentioned, which is very likely. That's what the tax comes in on expenses, so there has to be certain tax paid by the revenue generating units to pay that gap, to make up the difference. In terms of the colleges that don't generate money but actually make a deficit after they pay the tax, there will most likely be a subvention money, that's a certain percentage. We haven't worked out the details yet, that's being benchmarked with other universities right now, how they do that piece. That happens just about every university has an RCM, this happens like that. Many medical schools lose money, actually. Or, you know, there's always some colleges who can't increase their enrollment, for example, because of accreditation issues, that may not make as much money. So, so there has to be a subvention piece. How all this plays out, that's why maybe that detail is missing at this point, is that the final numbers are not, have to be teased out right now for 2017, so we have to see how that all plays out. But there's most likely going to be a tax to fund the gap for central accounts, there are going to be a subvention tax for the, you know, units that make a deficit. I think, you know, what's advantageous, though, is that it will be transparent. In the past, we had that problem that a lot of times we didn't know who is, you know, who is basically generating revenue, who doesn't generate revenue, where the money goes. And this will have much more incentives for those units to become profitable.
Right. Okay.
If I can just add a piece to that. Peter, one of the things that we've all emphasized in our recommendations is that this is a nonprofit organization. We aren't here to make a profit, and we're here to further education and research. So it may be the case that some of our RGUs aren't revenue generating in themselves. That's okay, that they're here to further the, the goals of the university, and we need to fund those.
Okay. Anybody else? On the livestream, I have this question, it's okay, I've got one, is how will divisions or central units be held accountable for their performance? So part of what we heard here is the revenue generating units, which tend to be the academic units, the colleges and schools. There'll be certain requirements for them, but what about if we're funding, if one of the recommendations is to fund the non-revenue generating units off state funding, which may well have a gap associated with it? How are those units going to be held accountable for the quality of the services and activities that they provide? Does any, any of our task force members talk about? Okay. What I can tell you, from what I know, is that that, that is being recognized and that process is in, is being focused on and is developing. Is infrastructure talking about that at all? No? Okay. I'll find out who's talking about it.
I could speak to it, Lauralee.
And we will make sure.
I could speak to it.
Okay.
In the Planning, Assessment, and Innovation Group, we're going to be proposing an assessment process for those units so that, it's sort of like an accreditation of sorts. They can, on a regular basis, evaluate their progress against some identified set of criteria, including customer satisfaction of those they serve, and get a better sense about how they're doing and being held accountable to it. So some sort of a unit assessment review is in the works for a proposal to the Steering Committee shortly.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? I'm aware that it's like one minute to 12, and I know that we booked you for an hour, and we're pushing the limits. So is there anything in particular that's burning for you that you want to make sure? Yes? Oh, here comes a mic. Here comes a mic. Hang on.
For some of the questions that were asked, I think you could ask actually the same question about how we do things now. So for, for example, for undergraduate tuition to be used as part of a subvention, as far as I'm concerned, that is effectively the case now. And so I, and so I think lots of good questions, and, and, and I think we could ask them about, about the way we do things now.
Okay. So the issue about transparency, yeah, the issue about transparency becomes absolutely critical, which has been raised a couple of times. How transparent is our budgeting process? How transparent will it actually be? And you're also asking questions about how transparent is the process by which we are developing and sharing information about how we're going to develop the budget. So those are clearly some additional pieces of information we need to make sure that you have. Are there any other questions or comments, something burning that if you left here, you'd go, mm? One more, and then we'll, yep, I saw you.
Also, thank you again for all the work that has gone through this. This is not an easy task, and certainly not in a place like Wayne State, so we appreciate all the efforts. I'm assuming that this is going to be, there'll be modifications as we go along. This is not going to be set in stone and just period, because this is a very fluid process at this point.
Right. Yeah, right. I mean, we as an institution are about developing, creating, testing knowledge, trying things out, making sure we assess and evaluate them, feeding them back, so we should actually live what we say we are. And this is an example, this is hopefully an example of how we make real what we say we are and what we say we are in the strategic plan. So it's not unusual that when you get a lot of information like this, as Lou said and as Linda says, you get all this stuff and you're like, whoa, what are we going to do with that? So all this information is going to be posted on the website, but as you think about it, you may be leaving here thinking, I want to know about this. Please go to the website, and there's a place where you can put that information in, and we'll get back to you in a timely way. Or talk to any one of the people you know on any of the task forces and raise it as an issue. Raise it as a question. And then it's our responsibility as part of this larger process to bring that back and to provide that information with you. So unless there's any more burning questions, I want to thank our task force members, and our Steering Committee. And my compliments to all of you. As somebody who for 30 years has taught students, like many of you here, and being in a big room, I watch body language, and for the most part, you guys were really attentive and focused. So personally, I appreciate that. So thank you very much, and have a good rest of your day.